Good evening and welcome to the Act in Maine Selectments Meeting of October 7th, 2020. We're going to call the meeting to order and do the Fledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 All right, let's begin, we'll begin with the Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
All right, I'm going to list, get through it. First thing is just FYI that the guardrail that was hit on each road, the insurance company was able to track down the owner and their insurance company is paying for replacement, so the road commissioner is handling that, but update that the insurance company covered it on the driver's side, so that's good news.
Nice.
Next item is we did get a call, and I think that came this went through you and eventually you had the individual call. Solong had concerns on Hopper Road, David took care of it with the assistance of District 1 Road Commissioner, so that's completely fixed, right David?
It is.
Thank you.
We had another call today, Donnie Man, all dressed for my last name, she had concerns on the road next to Little Red Schoolhouse.
Yeah.
And David is a lead on also reached out to District 1 and-
I had him put some cones up for it now, just till we figure out what's going on tonight, just to make people aware of what's going on and welding up into that form.
Okay, so those cones are in place.
Right.
Maplestone School reached out and wants to know, she's got three or four students, but she's looking for ideas, and they've been volunteering with the town before. I can't come up with any, especially this time of year because we're just, we're just small with, with everything going on, you know, taxes and every day. So I don't, I can't, I mean, I could maybe in the middle of winter come up with some projects, but you guys have anything that you think that they might be able to do?
Back when I was road commissioner, I always thought, young people would call me and I'd, you know, they'd try to find them something new, I figured I'd go pick some trash or do something like that. And then after we took all the MMA courses and stuff, with all the stuff that deals, they let them make them so they could do that, it was almost impossible to do it.
(Inaudible)
And not allowed to run any power tools or anything like that, so it was, the liabilities, MMA's kind of made it.
Yeah, the volunteer piece that we have, maybe this will, they do have to be eighteen to qualify for the volunteer piece of it.
Hmm.
I'm going to think about it now, I don't know, I guess I'll think about it for a week or so and see if you've got some ideas, maybe anybody wants any of some-
Yeah, maybe any of our other departments might have some stuff that they could use volunteers for.
Things like, I don't know, the mayor's pumpkin carving coming up, schools doing a retreat.
Well, I mean, one thing we could do is, you know, by advertising it, right now, some elderly people need their laundry and stuff like that.
Yeah, what's that?
They could contact you and then forward them on to Maplestone.
Okay, good idea. So we'll run something to maybe on cable, Cheryl or put a couple notices out, see if they're going to agree with that thing. Next item, just, I guess a couple of things in regards to the November election. We all seen the news and the press, and I hope we don't leave everything to see, but we, right now, we're up to over five hundred absentee ballots.
Okay.
We work Saturday and Sunday to get all of them out. They've all been nailed. We're doing, you know, twenty thirty a day. We've done this with other elections in the past, but both my assistants have been working the full election this year, so we need to make sure the office, give you support to close the office to any other business. That week, we'd also like to, so normal elections, when all the paperwork is done, it does include ranked choice, which, we're federally, we had ranked choice voting this year, I don't know if you're aware of that, but we're lucky, we're usually out by one or two with a normal election. This being a presidential, we'd like to open the office at noon time on Wednesday and ask you to move your elect, your meeting from the fifth, which would be a Thursday, instead of the fourth. Normally I would ask you just to cancel that week, but Veterans Day is the following elec, the following Wednesday, which is an eleven, which should be eleven, and that's a holiday based on your personal policy. So if we can have just election-related stuff on November 4th, the clerk's office will be at noon time on Wednesday, the 4th, right? I think I have the date of the election on the 3rd, right? So if the election is the 3rd, move your meeting from the 4th to the 5th, that'll be a Thursday night, would that work?
That's fine with me. Yep. Dave?
Okay.
Okay.
Let's give you the holidays, Monday is a holiday. I'm going to leave the name of the holiday out because I'm not planning on mine, but transportation is closed on Monday because of the holiday.
Okay.
Obviously, the town hall is closed as well. Staff that works will be paid for their regular hours, payroll deadlines will be noon time on Tuesday for the, in the, Mary Grant is having a workshop that they're calling it on October 17th, saying that the only business that's going to be discussed is going to be the pumpkin carving and trying to tie it down. It is a workshop, it's still a couple of communities who have sent cable over to film it, and it's going to be the 17th Act of Reserve.
What time? Do you know?
Uh, 10:00 AM. Right, Jamie? 10:00 AM?
Yes.
All right. I'm hoping the board will consider adopting a policy, and this isn't directed to any of my department heads in the audience, so don't frown on me, but we'd like to develop an in-house policy saying that noon time on Tuesdays is the deadline for your Wednesday agenda.
I think it sounds fine.
It's fine, that gives you enough time to get everything together.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly there's emergencies that need to come up, you know, we'll do our best to sneak them in, but it just gives us a little more perfect time to prepare for it.
It's fine.
Yep.
And it may take a few weeks to get, you know, certainly we'll work with them, but if we can set a time where everybody gets used to it, maybe, you know, might make things flow a little more. We need to get back on our oldest resident, because I've had a couple of, a couple of calls. Fire chief has been very helpful in helping me determine who that is. I think that we narrowed it down to two, and we kind of talked about this before, but with COVID and everything going on, what, what kind of celebration, how do you want to do the presentation? What do you see that looking like?
Can we do something similar to what we did with the town report?
As far as-
Get an insider to go to the house and-
Do a Zoom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To do it, so somehow have it broadcast up here?
Yeah, yeah, well, we could do it through the projector and-
Yeah.
Do a picture and all that.
Do something like that, because I'm sure the individual doesn't want to come to a meeting like this.
Uh, she might.
Okay. Well, I mean, if, if, if the person wants to come to a meeting, that would be fine too, but just trying to think of what would be the best for the individual.
And how, is this something you want to try to do in October? And I think that, I might need, you know, I might be ready for one more, one more name for them to follow up on. I think we've pretty much decided what it is.
Is it better to do it now or wait until after the election with everything going on?
That's what I was going to say. We could do it right after the election.
The clerk's side of it says definitely it's not after the election, but the human side of it says, let's do it now, after this, you know, what if something happens? I don't want that on my shoulders that because I didn't put it on the agenda soon enough, you know, I mean, it's the oldest resident.
Yeah, yeah, but he's been tough with this COVID thing there, you know, drawing him up.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Maybe let me get to the project over the next, maybe we can shoot like towards the end of the month.
End of the month, yep.
It's really just verifying the person and the immediate family, so-
Right, okay.
The flowers, you know, we'll do, but that'll take a lot, a lot of work into it, so.
Yeah, it's a five or 10-minute presentation, so.
Right. The desk did get moved downstairs, if you haven't been down there, the desk got moved. They put off the wall for now based on the budgeting numbers. Desk got moved, there was a window installed, we did have cable and phone moved, so it's all looked up to the desk, so that's all set up now. There's a couple of other minor things that need to be done, but it's in pretty good shape. Talked to them today about plexiglass, because they've got some of the things that we have there, we have there, but we're talking about maybe getting a bigger piece so it's easier. Cheryl's actually going to be calling around tomorrow because we need to put plexiglass on our second window as well, because we, you know, we just can't, you know, come through one window at this time of year, so we're going to try to get a second piece there and get some holes on it. The Newfield Floodman came and spoke to you guys, did his little, uh, he'd like to come back.
Wakefield?
Huh?
Wakefield Slutman.
Oh, was it Wakefield?
Wakefield.
Out the bridge?
Yes.
Bridge, okay.
So he wants to come back on the, he's going to be the next week's support beat, has the numbers for you and more information for you.
Please.
The York County Water Tribe Representatives, they contacted us right before COVID happened and they wanted to come in and try to, so I'll put them on the agenda for the 2nd verse. Individual that has run the tree lighting in the past is also going to be meeting with you on the 14th, where she's got some questions on how she can make this work during these times and still come up with something to celebrate the tree lighting. So that is on 14th. Been corresponding with the attorney regarding the gym, basically, the last, the last that we got off was that he, if the town of Acton is going to enter into a lease agreement, it has to go before town be. That's, the voters have to make that decision. There's a couple of ways, why, essentially, he emailed back and said, you know, is there a way that, you know, a legal way to take all responsibility off of the town back and, and do this without entering into a lease agreement. He's got some management ideas of how, with their proper insurance, we might be able to make that look, so we'll have more information as that comes forward. The, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about land that was inadvertently given to the town of Acton that came up at the plan board meetings based on that subdivision. I have been in contact with subdivision owners' attorneys, and again, they have refiled and updated deeds and they've taken the land back, if you will, done a corrective deed, released all of the paperwork that you guys have signed, but I've got Brad looking over it to make sure that I'm going to meet with him. And the last item I have is just regarding the roads. Do they have a chance to talk to Langley or do you want to leave until it happens tonight?
I'll see what happens tonight. Either way, probably whoever it is, probably going to have to explain to them what was done and this and that anyway, so whoever the person may be, I'll-
Do you think you can have him do it or?
You can, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But she's-
Yeah, yeah. Will, would you be interested in doing that?
Will, can you come up here for a second? So, Main Municipal, through the LRAP funds, we have to notify them of the length of roads that work was done on, and because we're in the process of, you know, filling the District 2 position, it's kind of been put off on hold with, with everything, you know, that's going on. The board may or may not appoint a road commissioner tonight, but these numbers were due October 1st, so is it something, if we gave you those three roads, that you would be able to measure the lengths for us and build District 2?
You mean for the pavement I was done last year?
Yeah.
East Shore Drive, Hopper Road, and Canal River.
You just want me to go measure it?
Yeah.
Just to make sound of them.
You want me to do that and I do it?
Okay, you don't mind, okay.
I can do it tomorrow morning.
Excellent. And a few things that we've had you done, you're still documenting this for two, and-
That's right, yeah.
So we're billing it out of the other side for track. Follow the partner now.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I've got.
Alrighty. Well, number three says Warren and Bills, I think we all signed. I did, you guys did.
Yep.
All right, then we'll move on to an approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded, all approved. Yep, all opposed? No? Okay. All right, let's see what else we've got. Minutes of the last meeting.
So this would be when the meeting of your summit is September 23rd.
23rd.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd.
Second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay. All right. Department heads, committee chairs, do we have anybody here that? Nope. Okay, then we're going to move on to old business. A is pandemic policy.
So this is the policy that the treasurer emailed over on September 18th, you know, you guys have had a chance to take a look at it. If not, I guess ask you to do that for next week. Main Municipal is recommending that we have a policy in place in regards to how we are, see if that's been handled.
Yeah, I've gone-
Add it next week?
Yeah. Is that all right with you two?
Yeah.
Okay. I've read through it, I mean, it looks good and stuff, but-
Yeah, I have looked it over.
Yep. All right, so next week. All right. Next would be B, citizens petition.
So I've talked about the petition a couple of times, and I see that Mr. Donahue was here, so that's something you may want to, may want to add, and I think that I said two meetings ago that there was clarity on the secret ballot versus the town meeting.
Okay.
I think we clarified that, that piece of the conversation. It is listed as 2522, which is an open town meeting. You know, he was offering to put it on the secret ballot and that happened and knowing we're not having an open town, yeah, knowing we're not having one. He does have more than enough signatures that have been certified. Got the advice from Main Municipal as far as you guys have the right to call a secret ballot based on 2528, choosing this question, but the, the petitioner can't because the voters signed it thinking it was going to be one way. So I think he's just looking for some information as to what they're going to do next. I'll preview, one of the paragraphs that, from legal, so it does say, "This state law does not require that the court hold a special town meeting within sixty days of receiving a petition. As discussed in Main Municipal's Town Meeting and Election Manual, Section 2522 only requires that the board put the article on the next town meeting warrant, which could be more than sixty days away, or call a special town meeting within sixty days, which can also be called more than sixty days from the receipt of, receipt of the petition." So.
I have something to add to that. You, you, a little bit, because I have the same paper from the Main Municipal. Further on, it says, and you're correct, it can go on to the next year. And further on, it says, "There is one exception to this rule. If placing the petition issue within the next warrant article frustrates the purpose of the petition, the initiators may use the same process to petition a notary public to schedule a special town meeting. If a notary public schedules a special town meeting, there is a question as to whether the decision of the resident is binding in a municipal offices. Basically, whether the issue was or not, the municipal officers' refusal to call a special town meeting was unreasonable, an issue which may have to be resolved by the courts."
Okay, so before he goes on, I didn't leave anything out. I'm reading, I'm, we're reading from different documents, and I want that to be clear, so-
This is from the Main Municipal.
I realize that. Let me, let me finish. You got a legal opinion from, from Brianna Gerson, the staff at Legal. She didn't put that in there, the information he's reading is at the manual, but I'm reading what she sent up, that's all I heard.
You know that this is, this is accurate.
Yes, it can, it can be called by a notary if the board, but the board can call a special town meeting, yeah.
They can, absolutely. And that was my, with COVID, look, I don't want to stand up there. I stood up there all last winter. I worked hard on this. And because of the restrictions that were placed by the governor on our regular town meeting, I thought that we could do the same thing. I didn't want to overwhelm the people with the fifty questions, same as you. You, you didn't put a couple of ordinance articles in there because of the-
The length of the ballot.
Right, factor of what was going on.
Right.
So, here we are, a couple, three months later, and the same thing is going on. I, when I came into the office, I never said that I wanted to change anything on this petition. I know the rules. I can't change the wording, you can't change the wording. Once the first signature is done, nobody can change the wording. You can refuse to, to put this on, and I can go back out and gain three hundred more signatures. It's up to you. I just wanted the same consideration with this as was done with the town meeting, the regular town meeting. And I know that if this was something you saw backed, you will have this on November 3rd. If this was something you were all in agreement with. Personally, I'm not happy with how this was handled. We're twenty-seven days since I turned this petition in. This is the third selectment meeting that this petition's been in, and the signatures weren't verified till yesterday. I got a notification yesterday, right?
I replied to your email yesterday.
Right, so when it was done, I don't know, but there was, I give you fifty-four days from the time I turn this in to November 3rd.
Right, and the state law requires that you sign an order forty-five days before the election. We had this conversation the day that you passed, that you go back to the first meeting when you passed it in, it clearly said that you would have to sign an order for this, to put, to, you have to sign it.
That first meeting, it could have been done, right?
Well, let me finish, let me finish. So you turned it in fifty-four, and I haven't counted the days, but based on what you're saying, it was turned in fifty-four days before the November 3rd election.
Okay.
So the board gets it on that Wednesday, fifty-four days.
It was a Thursday, yep.
Okay, so the following-
Well, that's Wednesday, yep, six days later, yep.
So the following Wednesday, it's fifty, you're fifty-four days, so now you're subtracting how many days?
Forty-eight.
Okay, so forty, so the following Wednesday would have been forty-eight days before the election. So you guys got this, you asked for legal advice to see that if it was accurate.
Right.
You got that very next week. I mean, by three days, I mean, we, we talked about the time on right at the beginning. I mean, you can still call an election November 11th, you know, I mean, you can still-
Right.
But we were on, I mean, the days were, were very tight. If you go from fifty-four to forty-eight, you have to do-
But I wanted to turn it in within the sixty days, and I know what you're saying, it's a tight deadline.
Right, because from-
And again, if it was something that these guys were behind, these three were behind, it, it could have got processed.
But in all fairness, in fifty-four days, I have ten days by law certified with signatures, correct?
But we can still have a special town meeting-
We can have one now.
-on Saturday after the election, right?
Well, you can, yeah.
Because what happens is if I go over the petition, right, it's going to take me thirty, sixty days to get it done. And then that puts us into January, and the notary decides when the date is to do it. Now, do we want to do it in that November?
No.
So let me finish. Do we want to do this in November now that things have kind of settled down, there's no active cases of COVID, the flu season ain't started, okay? Or do we want to do this in January? Because the people that signed the petition, the two hundred and twelve people that signed that petition, wanted that done this year, but because COVID came through, it couldn't get done. And we still have an opportunity to get this done this year, before the snow flies and before another two thousand tons of salt get added to the road.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I just want to make sure for the sake of clarity that it's clear that he turned this petition in fifty-four days before an election. The clerk's office has ten days to cert, to approve, to circulate it, so now we're down to forty-four.
Where are these rules? Because I didn't see any of these rules in the 2522.
I, I need to copy. Nevertheless, even at forty-eight days, you know, I mean, the timing, if they're getting a legal opinion on, on the petition, we were three days out.
Okay.
But you have, I mean, you have every right, and if you have over two hundred voters that have signed a petition, there's two hundred voters telling you that they want to vote on it. They want to have a chance to ask the order. Nobody's questioning that.
Well, you get, in the beginning, well, first, why you go to legal?
Probably to see if it was legal to do this. I mean, we can't just, you know, have somebody bring us something and, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, it's something we can bring to the people and, and it's, it's a legal document. You know, that, we want them to look it over.
Well, I'm actually kind of quite, quite proud of myself because this didn't go to a lawyer before your lawyer. This is all me, me and the people.
Pretty much any petition that comes before us is going to go to our attorney.
Right.
So.
You know, we send it there and have them look at it and see if there's anything-
And you guys are going to make a decision about this twenty-seven days later. I think that, that the time that goes from here we're at now was a lot of time. And, and, and like you said, there's a process that it has to go through. I don't know that process. I'm not a politician. I'm just a guy who lives in the woods, okay, that cares about the town. And, and, and the other thing I wanted to, to say too, is that, that the, you know, I looked up the comprehensive plan, and this falls right in line with the comprehensive plan. Without the lake, the town is dead. The town makes most of its tax base on the lake. And it's, as it says on, in Chapter 4, the lakeside properties are, are both done, okay? So now we go back to the ponds and streams and the back wood lots and stuff. And, and if we don't take care of the water now, this is only, salt's only been going straight, salt's only been going since nineteen forty in New Hampshire, it started in New Hampshire, part of the fifty years, sixty years that we've laid salt on the roads. We don't need the salt on the roads. We don't need straight salt on the roads, on any roads. And like Dave said, three hundred feet from a well, I've researched it, that's where most wells, and you can look it up on the MMA website, about how much municipalities pay to have people's wells. There's, there's a special statute in main law about paying out for well contamination for salt. It took a special law.
I think one of the reasons too, that it went to legal, is because when the board reviewed the wording of it, the questions come up, is how, you know, how are we going to enforce it if the voters decide to pass it?
Right.
So, three hundred feet of water wells, so-
It's going to probably count wide.
What do you mean town?
It'd be what?
What?
What do you mean townwide?
It's going to be a, a townwide, being on straight salt.
Right.
And how, well, some of the roads we don't take care of. We're not responsible for the state roads.
We don't know how much salt's getting put on them roads either. I know-
I don't think we can tell the state.
... towns that dump on the roads in the last five years, on town roads, on thirty-two of the hundred and sixty-something roads that we have. What's going on in a hundred and twenty-eight roads? Did a most of them soil themselves? That, how do you enforce any COVID violation? Somebody sees something, they file a complaint. Somebody says something, they file a complaint. I don't expect him to drive around behind the trucks. I expect these guys who are running the trucks to do the right thing. That's how it's enforced.
Okay.
It's very simple.
And what about, what about the state?
So you're saying that we don't want anybody running around, actually checking, but, so we're just going to lay it on the road commissioner and hope that's good?
Well, we're not going to lay it on-
Well, that's what you just said.
We're going to lay it on you.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking here.
Actually, we're going to lay it on him, because he's the man in charge in the, in the wintertime.
Who's he?
Chief. He's the emergency-
No, he has, he has nothing to do with it.
No, who would have anything to do with it?
So, so let me, let me continue. I was talking for a second so you could stop, so-
I wasn't finished talking.
But you, you made a point, no, and, and we are running this meeting, you are, so, so you think that-
Second time you've said that to me, and you know what, you don't run this, we-
No, we do.
You don't run this town.
We do.
You run this town, baby? The people run this town.
Exactly, and they put us here.
The people run this town.
So.
And we put you in charge to do the right thing.
And you're not doing the right thing right now, okay? You're putting the town of Acton in a very precarious situation.
Really?
Okay, you have no idea what you're talking about.
Really?
But, so, well, you're, but I get back to my point.
But you're an expert.
To get back to my point, so you're going to lay it on the road commissioner and make sure that he's not running more than fifteen percent or twenty percent salt, but then someone will call up, say, oh, it looks more than that. How are we supposed to make sure we know, we're going to have to do Civ test and analysis on each load of sand that rolls out? We can't do that. But see, because of all the research that you-
Why can't you?
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Why can't you?
And I think that-
Because the problem is these guys are all taking care of the roads at one o'clock in the morning, okay?
Dayton does.
No, they don't, okay? The only way that you can keep track of the material you put on the road is have computers in all your trucks and, you know, to be able to track what you're putting down. Now, you turn around and you say, okay, well, we're going to just put twenty percent salt in our sand, okay? But if you've got to dump twice as much salt or three times as much salt, you've got sixty percent of your sand down, you're right back to where you were in the beginning, okay? So, again, at the end of the day, you can't enforce this. You can't enforce this, there's no way. When Joe Schmo comes out of town and goes down the Trading Post or some business here, they put straight salt down their parking lot, what are we supposed to, we're going to find them, okay?
Yeah, you got to find them.
What happens when someone slides off the road?
And that's-
Like, or somebody else, any-
Okay, okay, okay.
Do your research, call the Department of Environmental Protection, and see what they think about sand down next to the lake.
It doesn't matter.
Because you, you don't, didn't do your research.
This is a vote by the people.
Exactly, and have-
Right, and be, hold on, hold on, hold on.
They're signing.
Both of you, both of you, hold on. You know, I know this is something that you want to do, and, you know, we asked why we go to a lawyer. I mean, we need to figure out how to, you know-
Would you like to repeat what you just said?
Out. No talking like that, please.
Sorry to the public that are listening to that.
Sorry. Now, as I was saying, you know, this is something we've, we've looked at, and, you know, I'm not against it, but how do we, how do we do something like this? I just feel like we need more time to figure it out. I know he's going to push to get it through, but-
This has to have, we have to have meetings.
Well, that's what I, that's what I mean, you know, like-
Everything else, this is a big deal.
Yeah, I know, it would be. It's not, it's not just passing it, but how do we enforce it? How do, you know?
So based on the conversation that we had, if you remember, you called the road commissioner up last week, and we kind of had conversations- So based on the conversation that we had, if you remember, you called the road commissioner up last week, and we kind of had conversations about, you know, how, how he thought it might go and how he thought it might, you know, the wells, you know, I sent it over to the attorney, and, and the question was, you know, how are we going to know where three hundred feet of everybody's water well is? You know, how, how is the road commissioner going to know, know what that is?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we asked legal because we didn't know if it was, if it was, if it was, if you could enforce it. What do we do about the state of Maine, you know, if they're not willing to abide by it? And I'm actually going to say to, to Mr. Donahue is that, I mean, the, the lawyer said that it's up to the people, that if they decide to pass an ordinance that, you know, enforce it.
What I'm suggesting is that we do this in an open meeting where there can be discussion on it, so we can't just slide this through a, a November third meeting just so it can get thrown through, because people don't have an idea of what they're voting for. I want to see meetings like we would have on any special meeting or whatever, okay? Go through the finance committees and everything else, because this, this involves a lot. This is a big deal. And especially when, and I've said it before, over and over, and I've only been doing this like twenty-something years, that when you go to these, these seminars to the state of Maine that are put on by the DEP, put on by Maine DOT, and they're telling you, don't put sand on your roads, and we're turning around and going to make an ordinance to do the exact opposite. It doesn't make a lot of sense. We have to really let the people of the town of Acton understand, and have some people like Pete Coughlin, have people like, uh, from DEP come in and say, what you're doing is the exact opposite of what we want you to do, okay? And by, by trying to slide this through, okay? The, the, it's being advertised differently. I know people who signed this said, I didn't know that, okay? And so we've really got to inform the town of Acton exactly what we're doing here.
And the flip side of that is, is his right to call a notary.
Right.
And we would, you know, and you would be forced, we would be forced to have an election if the signatures, so you could, I mean, and I'd have to get legal advice on this because I don't know the answer, but you can, you know, you could motion to include it in the next town meeting so that you're-
That's what I was thinking.
You know, the ex, next, I mean, I'm not sure if you take that vote and you make that guarantee that it'll be at the next open town meeting, um, you know, is that going to be June? Is that going to be December? We don't know at this point. I don't know if that stops the process of his ability to be able to call a notary, I would have to ask.
Yep.
Um, but, I mean, that's, you know, the notary piece, he's, he's right, that's, I'm trying to find the head of the case thing, it's driving me crazy, I'm seeing this, but-
And as for his, as for his timeline, I mean, when it was given to us, we only had, would you say, fifty-three days?
Well, we were at fifty-four days.
Fifty-four days out.
I put it again at the very next Wednesday.
Right, next week, I know you did.
Right, right, but I mean, we have the right to send it to our attorney, to have it checked, to make sure that we can put it forward and whatnot. We're just following a process that we followed on many other things that we've done like this. And, I mean, one thing I want to set straight is we're not snowballing, we're not trying to, to drag our feet on this. We're going through the process that we normally use, and we want to make sure that what we're putting in front of the people is legal and, and can be done, so.
See, now, this is an interesting, and I, I don't know with COVID if, if this is one of the governor's orders, but section twenty-five, twenty-two does not specify how recently before a filing, the signatures on a petition must have been collected. The concept of, this is the concept of staleness. However controversy issues come on, voters may not feel the same way about the subject matter of petition six months after they sign it.
Hmm.
And, you know, these are dated in March.
March, right.
So I don't know if the staleness, I mean, we're in a whole different time with, you know, with COVID.
Right.
But I know I have ten days left.
But I mean, we would-
Nevertheless, we were right on the cuff, I mean, we addressed it each week.
Right.
We're not following any other process that we normally haven't followed with other ones like this, so.
What do you, you can give me some sort of instruction?
Just a point of clarification. Uh, when you referenced me as the one making the decisions, we had a dialogue about could I state as EMA director that we need to use salt on the roads? And I said, in a state of emergency, as EMA director, it's my job to dictate what needs to happen to mitigate the emergency that is yet. And so if we had another ice storm of ninety-eight, I could say, yes, we need to use salt these roads, we need to have a planned removal of trees and the, and the whole extent. And so it's not a, every time there's a snowstorm, I'm going to tell Will what to put on his trucks. It's, hey, we're in a state of emergency, the five, six, seven, eight of us are meeting, okay, this is our plan. We need to get Acton open again, and we need to get things back to normal, and this is how we're going to achieve it.
Right.
That's where I think he has some confusion about what my role is when it comes to salting roads. Beyond that, I leave that type of decision-making up to the people we hired to do those jobs.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. And the other thing is, we've been, you know, we've been not told, but asked by the road committee for seven, eight, nine years to eliminate the, the sand side of it. You know, because it, like, and like Dave says, because the state is saying that's not the way to go. We've heard how much it costs to take care of the sand come springtime, you know, so, you know, what you pay, you know, nine, ten dollars a yard or whatever we're paying for sand is just the cost of the sand, not the cleanup and everything else that goes with it, so. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot of pieces to this.
I haven't put a stitch of sand in my truck in three years.
Yeah, yep.
And it's been salt, and I use a fraction of what we used to use.
Yep.
Done correctly.
So what do you guys want to do, I mean, as far as?
Well, I mean, I guess it's been proven that, that attorneys say that it's legal the way it sits? It's a legal petition?
Well, no, I mean, it's legal as far as, and I didn't check on the staleness of it, but, I mean, it's a, it's a legal petition because you have enough voters and it's been turned into you.
Okay.
But the attorney is not giving, not telling you that it's a legal question.
Okay.
Okay, that's-
You know, like he said, people put in ordinances all the time that can never be enforced, and, you know.
Right, right.
He's not giving you opinion on the wording of it because, um-
Okay, okay. I mean, we have a petition in front of us.
Right, do we want to see if the wording is, but the thing again is, is, I mean, I agree with Dave as far as not rushing into this. Um, and having meetings and talking about it, I mean, how, how do we say this goes through? But then we're, you know.
Yeah, then you have to try to enforce it somehow.
Right.
So, I mean, it's probably our, our responsibility to educate the public as to-
If you were to sit down, you'd have, you'd be required to have a public hearing.
Right, right, but I don't think we have to do, but, I mean, right here, it's not, it's, it says, I mean, his, Mr. Donahue's, uh, preference with this was to do it in the next open town meeting.
Right.
Okay.
So, and I would like to just abide by what he wants.
Yep.
So, which means if we have, you know, our, our next scheduled open town meeting isn't until next June, as we sit right now, from what we know. Which could be pushed out to July or August or whatever it is, depending on what the world's doing, but I'd like to think by then we're back to a normal, halfway normal life, so, or at least a new normal, so.
Want to make a motion?
I mean, I don't think, I don't think we need, what's the rest of the board field? Do we need to put it back through our attorney to see if it's, if we need to do anything else with it, or?
Make a motion to, um, I'd say, uh, grant the applicant his, uh, what do you want to call this petition, and to have the vote on next open meeting.
Next regularly scheduled town meeting?
Regular, scheduled open meeting.
Open town meeting pursuant to twenty-five, twenty-two.
Yep. I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right, all opposed? And then can we have the attorney look at this to?
He's already looked at it.
All right, so, and that's-
I mean, that, I guess the only question at this point, I mean, you know, you have to ask a question, and then you've got the, um, which I have to believe with COVID is probably, you know, probably not accurate, but it's, I mean, as clerk, and I see it, it's something I'd probably ask.
Okay.
We've made a motion to insert it at the next open town meeting. Um, we know we have to have a public hearing, so as we get talking about town meetings, and when you schedule one, we'll go backwards and, and do it. And then I guess the other thing is, we would ask, now that you've made a motion to second it to insert it in the next open town meeting, does that negate the opportunity to call a notary for an open town meeting?
So we need to find that out, right?
Looks like I'm losing the question.
Ask the question, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so, and we'll, um, you know, next week's agenda, there's some answers, hopefully.
All right, moving on, planning board meetings, APAP.
Uh, someone mentioned last week that, um, there were some problems with some of the planning board meetings. I think that I see the individual with, um, the APAP's response, and I see that you guys, there was some sort of glitch, which is a part of my, I don't know.
Okay. All right, new business, uh, adopt two thousand twenty, twenty-one general assistance maximums.
So last week we had, um, public hearing.
Yep.
Yes, we did.
We went over, uh, all of the maximums and minimums. We didn't have any public comment, so we were going to ask them to approve it, adopt the state's new numbers. If, uh, and so, you know, only benefit the resident, they increase the amount that they could make, so.
Okay.
I'm, I make a motion, we accept the general assistance ordinance, ordinance AH for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one.
I wasn't at that meeting, so if you want to-
I'll second it, and it's been moved and seconded, so all in favor, all opposed, all righty.
I'm going to abstain only because I wasn't at the meeting, so.
Yep. All right, do that. And, thank you. Next, we've got District One road work proposals.
We have, we have two seats, um, I'm going to pick one, District one.
Uh, well, I'm in District one, we're, uh, a few updates. Monday Pike was in, uh, they finished paving the A-roads, uh, so it's all done, and all of them, uh, they're coming in, hopefully the first next week, they're going to pave all the A-roads and all the driveways, because we've got plenty of handwork, they have to do a lot. Besides, I should have to do-
I just want to sign that, because I did-
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We have two local workers in the area wanting to do the shoulders on that road, which I was going to do myself, and I had a pretty plan, I had to just rim rub the dirt that they agreed with, so we drive quite a bit of dirt, yes, we're just going to take an operator, pull the shoulders in, and we might have to haul some ground, but we're going to stick together ourselves. Then the second one, I have a section on Acton Bridge, uh, right, right after Asbury Lane, the hot top's pretty broken up or something like that for a couple of years, and the hot top's starting to come off pretty good.
Time to buy old treasures, uh.
Yeah, right there.
What's her name? I can't remember her name.
I, I don't know. So right there, so we're going to box kind of, just dig it up a little bit, see if it's in there, and we're just going to pave it back in, because it's, it's getting pretty bad, so. Are you guys all set?
I think we're all set, thank you.
When they get down the driveway, it's not like on major, we're going to go right up there, probably next year they get down, that project will be all done, so.
Thanks. You guys have any questions?
Nope, sorry.
Motion to approve the estimates of these two street works, can we get started?
All righty.
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approved the two jobs, two projects that District One wishes to do on the A-roads.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
And Acton Bridge, excuse me.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed?
All right, one more thing, uh, Jan, have you heard anything about the RSMF thing?
Yeah, I sent the board a couple of emails, we saw the emails coming in from Tammy. I didn't see the last one.
I didn't.
She's very, very sorry, she doesn't know why people are not getting that, um, she says that they have a full plate, it's just not required on that, but she's still working on getting that.
I have everything in a book that we've done, so whatever.
Awesome.
We can.
We email her probably weekly.
Well, I'm keeping track of everything, so that's all I have, so.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Fire chief tanker presentation?
So we've been, we've gone through the process of getting the tanker bids in. Only two companies came within the budget confines that we voted on, and you have those presented before you. I met with my liaison Ed and went over things in great detail. The price you see at the top is the initial bid price, what they came in at when we sent out the request for this. At the bottom, you'll see upgrades that we made that fell, or we hope would fall in the budget of what we originally wanted to have the truck built. When we build a truck like this, we're looking for a twenty-five-year truck at minimum. So we're trying to build something that's going to last, and so we made upgrades that would keep it, uh, give it a longer life. Uh, metal bed cover to keep water and debris out of the top of the truck, um, protecting the fuel tank, all-inclusive pump panels, so it keeps salt, road grime, and all the stuff out of the internals of the pump panel itself. More enclosed hose and tool storage, so that hoses and tools and things like that aren't exposed to the elements themselves when the truck's out on the road. What you see on the second page is a drawing as an example from one of the manufacturers, what I'm talking about. You can see that it's fully enclosed, encapsulated, and so all your tools, equipment, and everything like that is protected from the elements, which is the goal that we've had from the beginning. But again, had to work within the confines of the budget that we had. The Rosenbauer gives us a discount if we pay a portion of the vehicle ahead of time, which I confirm that Michelle has stated practice for us to pay a percentage. So that price on the bottom is the price if we pay half down, which is, again, from Michelle said, we've done before, like, this is a pretty good, pretty good cut. And the Midwest on the other side does not, does not do that, and so it comes in slightly above the total amount of money that we allocated for this, short of what we will receive from the whole tanker which it is replacing. So what I'm looking for from you guys is I vote on who will be awarded the contract, and then we'll go into the finale, the ins and outs of the contract specific and the two-hundred-page detail of what size screws and what color bolts we'll use, uh, in the future. But I need to know who we're signing with so we can start that process. My recommendation, and I'm backed by my liaison, is to go with the Rosenbauer. It is the one that comes in under the price if we, we put in accordingly, and it, I believe, will be the best truck for the town, did the job the best, and will serve us a long, long, healthy life.
I did meet with Chief Smith about a couple of weeks ago, um, went over the specs and whatnot, and Midwest builds, what, mainly a lot of tank trucks, but, and they're pretty much in the Midwest. Uh, there was no representation in this area for repair, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct.
Which is a biggie. Rosen, go ahead.
Go to a local department, which owns one of their vehicles, and they're having a very hard time getting basic parts and maintenance, which is unacceptable in our line of work.
Rosenbauer, I mean, any, any truck manufacturer out there, you'll hear pros and cons. I've heard some cons about Rosenbauer, but mostly it was in the chassis side of things. This being a stock chassis of, you know, regular MAC chassis, it's outside their hands, it's not an issue there. Um, I have been to the factory where this truck is going to be built, it was a number of years ago, but, um, you know, just a little background, good headworking people there. They're the offshoot of a company called Central States. Central States was bought out by Rosenbauer. Um, I operated a Central States tank truck for many years in York, so, so I do have a little bit of knowledge on the company, if you will.
And our local dealer is Specialty Vehicles, who we purchased the endos from a couple of years ago, and we've had phenomenal service with them. So they're very responsive, they come up out of Massachusetts from their service center, and then their mechanic is actually at a Casco.
Hmm.
So, not a far distance for getting fire truck service.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, they're all, pretty much all the manufacturers are pretty decent. It's how they handle repairs and breakdowns and things like that. And that, this company is, is right up there on that and does a great job, so, from what I know, so, um, I guess if you want to, are we ready for a motion?
I, I have some questions. I mean, um, I'm looking at the, the body warranty on one and body warranty on another one, the Rosenbauer's only got a two-year warranty on it, and Midwest's got a lifetime warranty on it and ten-year paint. Um, the upgrade you made went from a Kenworth T hundred series conventional to a MAC chassis, what was the reasoning for doing that?
We wanted parity between the two, because-
You wanted what?
Parity, them to, to, I wanted to see what the prices were if they came on the same chassis.
And what if they priced a Kenworth on this one?
It wasn't an option that they offered to us at the time. They were, they were offered to submit with a select group of chassis, and they, they didn't choose to. Their recommendation was to go with the MAC chassis as their manufacturer.
I mean, I, I just, I'm looking, I kind of know, I know a little bit about trucks, just, just a smidgen, and, uh, I mean, everybody, I, I mean, I know more guys, I, I own a MAC. I've had many of them, and, um, but the Kenworth usually is, usually more money, again, at the day than a, than a MAC.
Yeah. It can, a lot of times too, for us, falls into who they have agreements with.
Yeah, yeah. But I, what I'm saying is, the, the Kenworth here was at $385,000. The price went up because you went up to a Mack chassis instead of staying with the Kenworth chassis, which Kenworth chassis is probably a better truck overall. But did, are these double frame trucks? Are they single framed?
The, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Because I, I mean, it seems to be a pattern here of every time we need to do a new trucks because of frame split.
Yeah.
And, and, and what I know about trucks is, and I've got trucks with double frames. And I've got trucks with single frames. And these truck manufacturers like Shaw Brothers up in Gorm, all their big trucks are all single frame trucks now. You only get these big singles because they don't have to worry about that anymore. And if that's something there that we looked into or not, whether or not that might make the longevity of this truck go a little longer.
We did talk to them a little bit about some of that stuff. That's where Rosenbauer edge they had a little bit too, because they use, like on the fire pump side, they use a lot of stainless. They galvanize parts of their frame, especially the parts like the cross members and stuff that seem to be the very soon-to-go parts. Both of them sit on a main steel frame. I remember that from the spec.
Yeah.
But it doesn't specify in the write-out that they gave us.
It's double the number. Okay.
We have changed our operation at the fire department when it comes to maintenance of underbody cleaning. We regularly clean the hamster oil them now. They're going in Monday to have that all done. We'll do it on truck a day. So we're trying to stay ahead of that. I know there's no magic bullet that's going to take care of that problem altogether. But our maintenance guy, D C Ham, is super on top of that stuff. If you know him at all, that is his jam.
He's the same guy that's doing all the highway department stuff in Sanford, correct?
Uh, no, I'm talking about Wayne.
Oh, oh, I was talking about the guy who's doing the undercoating.
We actually take our undercoatings to Knox.
Oh, you do?
They go right there. They're running out of service, but maybe an hour tops. And we do, we do all the vehicles, just to have that extra layer.
So this is going to be a granite? The one from Rosenbauer was a granite, granite style?
Yep. That price in there too, we upgraded the suspension to the MRI. I'm talking to the different tanker groups and some popular different truckers. That was one of the recommendations they had.
Yeah, MRI, just what, now what's...
That suspension has a little bit more articulation.
Like a T-Ride?
Rip on a different dynamic surfaces.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we go with the recommendation of the fire chief to go with the Rosenbauer tank truck for a price not to exceed $398,403.
I'll second that.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
R F P for loan?
So this has been made. The next step for us is to go out and request proposals for the loan. Go out to banks, buy a secret bid to get the best interest rate for the town. So I have gone through this, some blanks that we need to fill in with your approval. The top page, oh, actually, I didn't get this today. I think you saw it a couple of days ago. We really just need to go over the dates. And we need to insert the type, type of truck and stuff, but we can do that one with Greg. So it's been a point, it's been accepted tonight. The treasurer said she'll have it distributed tomorrow. We were looking at putting a deadline for the R F Ps at noon time on 21st. That will give us a chance to open them that night and award it to a bank so we can get the process going.
Okay.
So if you're okay with those dates, this is a 2020 episode, right? You? Everything else is the legal. They have a, she hasn't anticipated closing of the loan of November 16th. Everything like, we can move that up a little bit further, but... The attorneys have to draft up the closing documents. And then the only other thing is the amount. So we'll take the 400,000, well, not 400,000. We'll take the, what you just motion, 398,403. We'll subtract the 70,000-ish that's in that account. The R F P will do for the remainder.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So we'll handle that and get it out to bid.
Alrighty. E, abatements and supplements.
So tax is being sent out. And we'll come some, most, well, not most, all of our abatements and supplements are for owners of record that were not documented as of April 1st. So which means that for a couple of different reasons were missed. But the abatements that we're presenting to you tonight all have matching supplements. So you're abating a particular account number, and then you're supplementing it to the correct owner. So we're... Three, four. Except for one, we have extra two retirements. We worked that. So the Johnsons on map 235 lot 35, had not on 114 lot 10. Whitley on map 256 lot 6 are all abated and supplemented by someone else. The next three are Martel properties, three different map and lots. The accessory bench went out there today, it was in the building. And confirmed that these buildings were removed from the properties before April 1st. And that that paid for. So these three abatements for Martel are just going to lower the tax amount because the building's more there. We feel better when we have three abatements stuck on, so long. Three and three. And then to coincide, if you want to sign them all together, you'll have the same map and lot with the proper owners. Ryan Foal, Sarah Delacole, and Matthew Vincent. So you've got three to match the per payment, same on the lot. Obviously nothing on Martel. So those are the supplements that right on the building. And then anytime you supplement tax bills, you have to find the tax commitment. Because we've removed it from the fire tax commitment. We're creating a new tax payment because it's time for that to be settled.
What do you want?
If I can give you these two. And David's got some too.
Okay, so we got these three here.
So did you say the supplements can all be done together?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll need motions on both of these, right? Alright. I'm going to give you these, David. You can make a motion on those three.
Okay, so what do we got here? These are the supplements, correct?
I wanted to be abatements first.
First. I've had to do the abatements first.
That would be me.
It's all, I think, right?
Yes. Okay. And let's see, we have, yeah, we can name the names, right? Yeah. This goes out to Kelly and Joan Johnson. We have an abatement. Town of Acton has received your 2020 assessed value of your Acton property as a result of our review. You've granted abatement on lot, map and lot 235, 035. Reason for the abatement, the original tax bill was sent to the wrong person. All these are the same, aren't they?
Correct.
They all go to the, okay.
That's three.
Okay.
And then the last three are Martel.
Yep. So this one here is for, let's see, lots just the value. Let's see. We, the Acton Board of Assessors, has approved a tax abatement for $228,379 in value and $2,751.97 in taxable dollar real estate. So that, once again, is for property that they did not own at the time of the tax, tax commitment. So that one there is for Johnson. We can do all three of these together, correct? Yeah. The next one is for Samantha and Thomas Pagano. This one is map and lot 114 dash 010. Same description as far as what this is for. It's for the original tax bill was sent to the wrong person. We, the Acton Board of Assessors, have approved, have approved the tax abatement for $205,899 in value and $2,481.8 in taxable dollar real estate. Once again, that was for, sent to the wrong person. The last one here, well, not the last one, but this one here I have in this lot, is for Elliot and Susan Whitley. Whittley?
Whitley?
Yes. This is real estate, map and lot 256 dash 006. Once again, this is for the original tax bill was sent to the wrong person. We, the Acton Board of Assessors, have approved a tax abatement for $50,250 in value and $605.51 in taxable real estate. And I will make a motion that we approve these three abatements for Johnson, Pagano, and Whitley.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Alright.
Okay. I have three more. Sandra J. Martel. These are all for, well, two of these are for Sandra J. Martel. Let's go through them individually. And this one is map, the first one is map and lot 217 dash 001. Reason for the abatement, buildings were removed prior to 4/1/2020. This is real estate value of $704.65 revised. So that's, yeah, let me just back up a smidge here. The land value on these stayed the same at $36,000. What we're doing is removing the building value of $22,477, which takes the real estate, the total real tax from 704.65 to 433.80. That's exactly, I was going to read the bottom part, but that's exactly what I just said, so... The next one is, once again, Sandra J. Martel. Reason for the abatement, the buildings were removed prior to 4/1/2020. Land value... And this one, the land value actually stayed, this changed. Let's see. That's kind of odd. The building value came off, but the land value dropped. So the total real estate tax on this one is $1,173.79, and it's going down to $358.49. We, the Acton Board of Assessors, have approved the tax abatement for $67,659 in value and $815.29 in taxable dollars. So I guess my only question is, why would the land value drop if the building was removed?
I'd have to ask Dennis. There's no note down bottom?
Uh, no.
How much did the land drop?
It went from 47,750 to 29,750.
So table that one out.
Yeah. And the next one's the same thing. That one, the land value was dropped on that one as well. So I guess on both of those, I got a question. So, so we have...
We'll just do the one?
Yes, we have just the one. So I'll make a motion on this one that we approve the tax abatement for Sandra J. Martel. And this was for, the only one I'm going to approve is map and lot 217 dash 01.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Alrighty.
It just seems odd if we're just, if, if they're taking, the buildings were removed.
What if there's less land?
Buildings were removed prior to, yeah, that's... I'm sure they have a logical explanation, but just one I'd like to know.
I don't read the, the amounts on these tax bills. These are supplements, so...
The supplements on the free will be a complete wash for the abatements. So I'm going to check them.
Yeah. It's basically money in, money out.
Yeah.
It's these two too. We're not signing those. That's it.
Those are the ones that I questioned.
Yeah.
Better to check.
Hmm?
Better to check first.
Yeah. Excuse me.
I'll make a motion that we approve the supplement tax bills for Matthew and Joan Vincent, Ryan Foal, and Sarah Delacole.
I'll second it.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Alrighty.
Just got a...
Do we need to sign those?
Uh, you need to sign those, and there's commitment papers that need to be...
Where do we sign them, Jen?
Oh, yeah, board's signed, right?
Alrighty. F, CEO Projector Purchase.
Mind if I jump back to the petition for a moment, just because my phone has one percent. Something's going to die, and I found something in the manual. Nobody corrected, so I have to assume that one.
Yep, go ahead.
So, naming, so first thing, because I can sign it 10 days, and I knew I saw it. So your recall ordinance for the Town of Acton, section four clerk certification, within 10 days of receipt of the petition, the town clerk shall certify the signatures and determine if the petition meets the qualifications. So that's your recall ordinance. So that's that. I need to just kind of... Um, as far as municipal and petition, so validation is the first step. There is no requirement that validation occur prior to considering the merits of the petition or vice versa. Typically, however, towns choose to perform the validation step first so that municipal officers do not spend time considering the merits of a petition that may not be binding. However, some boards of municipal officers choose to immediately consider the substance of the petition so that the sometimes lengthy step of validating petition can be avoided if the petition is without legal merit or the municipal officers choose to place the article on their, or in their... So there's no date for state statute, which is calling it a lengthy process, though. You could, I mean, past practice has always been that we verify them first. But you certainly have the right to swap it if you want.
I think it makes a lot of sense to validate the signatures first before you move forward, so, yeah. Nope. I like, the process was fine.
Cheryl's indicating that we make the motion for the actual commitment paper seconded and then vote on it before we went down to, if you did?
I'm not sure. I mean, we did...
Oh, he did the supplemental, but he didn't vote for the commitment.
For the certificate of supplement? Is it the same thing? Okay. That's what I thought, but I wasn't...
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll...
So, F now? CEO Projector Purchase?
Yeah.
So now that land use has kind of moved upstairs, they're looking for a different type of projector and a different type of screen. The projector is $899, the screen is $142. It's over my $500 limit. The town of Mississippi is being presented to you for approval. I think in your packet, there was a, as you get an expense summer, we'll fill it from the front of work. There are more than enough money, even the outstanding bills. We have a few staples, the social telephone, they're there. They've got seven, $699.77 out in the outstanding bills, but their fly line is 1464 and the trip line 3790. So if you're looking to replace that, the money will be there.
Okay.
Is there going to be a bigger screen than the ones here?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Different format.
This is coming out of the codes. This is coming out of the codes budget?
That was the intention, I mean, the, this one was paid for on municipal management, but it works fine.
Yeah.
That's your call.
Yeah, this, I found this one small when you're sitting in the back trying to see something on it.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the projector's going to be mounted, correct? Ceiling mounted?
Aye, yes.
Yeah, so it'll be set up like downstairs? Yeah.
And I asked them if they wanted to move that.
Look at it.
If they want to move that, then I still need that person.
Down there.
While we're meeting.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion on this?
I make a motion, we approve the project for the cam, for the projector and the screen for use in the hall upstairs here.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
Uh, one of the things I could have mentioned to you thinking about code enforcement, um, we are moving the, now the desk area, we're moving, having the camera moved.
Oh.
They've moved, they've put all five in the cabinets where the, you know, the, I do with cameras, because we all see the people come in, have the staff, have the customers go in, shooting now, obviously, in front of the cabinets, so we're going to move it to the other room.
Yeah.
Basing down on the entrance doors, so, uh, they're off.
There you go, David. All right. All right, G, liquor application?
Thanks to Ms. Cheryl, you have two tonight.
Okay.
It's been crazy week, and looking, I knew I had two, but, God love us, you found it in the audit place. So, we have two, they've both paid their fee, one at the Above &amp; Beyond Catering that's doing a wedding, at a private residence in West Shore Drive, the other one is Bone Ami Catering, A&amp;I. Another wedding, this one is done at Blueberry Hill Farm, so, um, both revivable, that none of the, they needed to, that's towns, pay the fees, it's just really more of an incremental for you, and thank you to the state for.
Those are just one day?
One day events.
One day events.
You see, if we're voting on this, are we supposed to vote on this?
Yeah, you got an amendment, you're going on.
Okay. We should be able to do these both together, can't we?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve of the Bone Ami Catering and the one for Above &amp; Beyond Catering for the one day liquor licenses, one's at Blueberry Hill, and the other one is at a private residence on West Shore Drive.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
Does it require one signature or three?
All right, so we've got H, Freedom of Information request?
I have two Freedom of Information requests. I mean, the first one is from, is looking for material related to Martel Estates submitted from the applicant from October 1st. Materials regarding Martel Estates, which are on the planning board packet brought to October 15th. Second one comes from Ron Colson, who's looking for the Farley Building documents, complete file, complete file in one language, or.
Okay.
Slide on for them, we'll get them to the departments and start working on them.
My hand's getting sore tonight.
You're sorry?
My hand's getting a little tired tonight.
Your hand?
Yeah, you're keeping us kind of busy tonight.
Hold on to the back, I can't. I, can I pull myself, if I got my throat and I was all around, I was losing.
Yeah.
I'm busy.
You, you don't need to vote on these, it's just a.
No, I wanted to acknowledge them.
No.
I'll take care of them from there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Fine.
All right, he's fine. I'm just going to.
He only takes one signature, does it?
Yeah, just initial it, there you go.
Yeah.
Dam Coalition?
That's for Ed.
That's for Ed, all right, Ed.
Damn Coalition. I don't know how you emphasize it. We had a meeting with the Sanford-Chapley Acton Dam Coalition. We will be getting some money back for the work that was done on the, uh, Mossam Dam. Pardon?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, forty, forty-six hundred and change, I think, is the number, I got it correct in my head.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, uh, that's a good thing, so, since we did go over, but that helps bring it back to reality, so. Um, it was a, it was a Zoom meeting, so it was kind of weird, but that's, you know, with all that going on, but, um, it was a good meeting, there's talk, you know, we, the budget was presented, but, because we can't vote on the budget until June, so, or whenever our next town meeting is. So I think you have the numbers for the budget?
Yeah, we do, and we talked about them in Chapley last night.
Yeah.
You know, some of the, some of the questions we had, we weren't sure if Sanford ran off about fiscal year or.
Sanford is on a fis, is on a fiscal year like we, uh, yeah, because I did ask that question at the meeting.
Um, we have last year's number, so we can't tell how much it went up.
Uh, I think it went up $2,500, because there was some other work they wanted to do. Uh, they're talking about putting some sort of a.
Great, uh, grate or something?
A grate, well, not a grate, but a ladder, not a, like a walkway system.
Okay.
Uh, across the dam, so they don't only, will have to bring a diver in once a year versus twice a year, they bring divers in to clean the grates, uh, you know, to go actually go down in the water and clean them out and whatnot. So this will allow someone to get down in there with a long rake and just do a, a general cleaning, eliminating one of the needs for a diver, and the divers were quite expensive. I don't remember the, the price on it, but it was, you know, fairly expensive, so.
Well, and Lezio, who was the president, he was at our meeting last night, and indicated that they were looking, you know, for support from the selectmen in regards to the budget.
Yeah.
Chapley decided they would table that until they got the reimbursement from the dam.
Mm-hmm.
And then they would revisit it, so.
Yeah.
But overall, it wasn't a big increase.
No, no, actually, I, I think it was $2,500 increase, but, yeah.
They don't have an executive schedule, right?
No. No. Nope. But everything was approved as far as sending the money back to the towns, you know, as far as the reimbursement.
Good.
Yep. And it's a little, they didn't really go into much detail as far as whether the work that was done was successful or not, partially because the lakes are down this year anyway, because we haven't had any rain, so, but, from, what the contractors and whatnot believe that it was a success for the work that they did, so. Okay?
Well, thank you. All right, I guess we'll go to J. Triano, Triano Contract?
Triano Contract, this is all followers of the transfer station, uh, offhand, over the updated contract, it's actually taken effect October 1st. Uh, there is a $50 increase in the haul, um, based on last year's contract, I did meet with the treasurer, and based on the amount of hauls from last year, the budget will support the increase. Of course, the increase that has to do with, involves supports, same with the same company, and, uh, you know, signing this contract. Nothing else on it has changed.
I'm fine, I'm actually going to abstain from this one.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion on this?
Or do I?
Contract.
All right, you can go, sir.
I'll make a motion, we approve the new, uh, contract for Triano Waste Services.
All right, and I'll second that.
I'm abstaining from this only because of my relationship with Triano Waste with my work. They do also haul for the Town of Rollinsford, and I do deal with, with them, so.
Who do you pay per ton?
Pardon?
Who do you pay per ton over there?
I pay for, uh, per ton trash is different.
Oh.
So, and my haul rate is different, so, but, I mean, just because of that, because of the relationship I have with them, I just want to abstain.
That's fine, that's fine. So it's been moved and seconded, so, are we in favor? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
One of section.
Just need, does it just need one signature?
It probably makes no difference, but just recall. Because I deal with the same salesman, too, so. How much are we paying to have a haul done?
Haul rate? All right, there you go. All righty, okay, Rec Committee Appointment?
Let me have, um, the CEO who, uh, here, uh, shown his first, and filling the last box correctly. We didn't have a conversation with him, he had a lot of great ideas, and he knows it's going to be an asset to the town.
Oop, that's on the back there.
Nice.
None of the committees and some district involved.
Nice.
Want me to read it?
Sure.
I like to have these things memorized.
Yeah.
Okay, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, two, Carol Ward. To Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine, hereby appoint you as Recreation Committee Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2021, given under our hand the seventh day of October 2020. I'll make a motion that we approve Carol Ward to the Recreation Committee, be Recreation Committee Member.
It's been moved and seconded, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Ready?
Do we want to do public comment before we?
We could. We're gonna, yeah, I'm going to do public comment first.
Maybe in the next meeting, or is I could skip out of here, right?
Pardon? Yeah, I mean, do public comment, and then we can.
Yep.
Yeah, and then we just go into executive and come out, and that's it.
Yeah. All right, anybody for public comment?
Just a point of clarification on Mr. Donahue's petition. Could you read that again, please?
The wording of it?
Yes, please.
Are you in favor of establishing a town ordinance that reads, "No person shall spread, discharge, or permit the discharge of straight road salt, sodium chloride, salt brine, calcium chloride, or magnesium chloride on any road within the Shoreland District, Resource Protection District, or within 300 feet of water wells. Sand and salt mix used for, sand and salt mix used in the aforementioned areas shall not exceed 20% salt."
That petition seems to be contradictory. Uh, one part is telling you, you cannot put salt down within 300 foot of well, and the other part is saying, a 20% mix is okay. You got two wells sitting right outside here. Mm-hmm. That are not even close to 100 feet from the.
And they won't run in straight salt out here either.
I understand, Ed, I'm, I'm not arguing that.
Nope, I'm just making your point.
Okay, what I'm saying is, the petition of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, is contradictory. One part's saying, you can't use straight salt, or you can't use any salt product, and the other part's saying, 20% is okay. It's a contra, contradiction. I don't see it passing, by the way, but, you know.
Right, you are right, though. Yep.
Stranger things have happened.
No? Okay.
I just got one quick question before we go into executive session.
Yeah.
Um, is it possible next week to meet at 5:00 instead of 6:00? What's the thoughts?
I can't, I got Billy.
You what?
I'm, I'm working out of town, so it's kind of tough for me.
Okay, okay. That's fine.
Okay, do you want to do?
My meeting last week got messed up because someone in the town I work for didn't.
Do you want to move that?
Post things like it should have been, so, and we can't postpone it. I told, I already told that committee, I'm not postponing my meeting again, so I can meet with them later, so that's fine.
Could we move to Thursday?
No, that doesn't, that doesn't make a difference, that's fine.
I'll get Thursday.
Because I think the planning board's using upstairs here pretty much.
Uh, okay, yep.
That's going to be tight, so, yeah, no, it's fine, just a question.
All righty.
Yep. I told them I would, you know, when I got out of my meeting, I would hop on, that meeting, it's a Zoom meeting, so.
I'm asking you to lighten the tone.
That's fine, however it works, we got a lot going on.
All right.
So this comes first.
That's good. All right, moving along. I guess I need a motion.
I make a motion, we go into executive session, for Personnel 405-6A1, and it's what, 7:32, I guess, if I'm seeing that clock right.
And I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed?
The left side, Mr. Donahue abstaining and not going into executive session.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, they said, like, the roads, where I see, we treat the roads and not, I know, I know, there's a million, but it came down, I mean, I look, we go to the court, and they can say, well, it's, like, the lawyers in the roads, and you're all, and it's just ordinance, see, and, yeah, and I don't understand, because it's fucking, we need to sit down and talk about, and he doesn't, maybe he did that, I think, you know, like, that guy's, I mean, I didn't see, um, you know, I mean, I didn't.
Perfect example is, okay, I'm going to do What is that water about? My wife, Mark. People all work, we're starting to put on the age over on these hills, because It kills, it happens in the water. We got this water, you know, it's my girl, oh, because it was history gone. So it was a line now. And, like, when she was there tonight, we got to have these conversations, you know, meetings and all this stuff. The trouble is, everybody looks up and talks. It happens. It doesn't matter who it is, you can watch all the meetings for the last year. Every freaking meeting, somebody's sitting there too long. It ends up being a negative pushback, you know what I mean? And you have to accept, I mean, but when You don't have to be, which is really sad, man. This isn't the first time, and these come to me, and he's been treated that way. So he just mad. As a public official and what they're thinking will be white in the mouth. You have to respect, because they give a different statement. You know, this is, this is your professional law. You know, if somebody can be off and on that, you have to visit them. You know? You really shouldn't. And it's not, you should haul, you gotta I mean, if I, if I, somebody's got my haul, it's twenty years, because it's a bottle. Down west to a drive, and it's been a month, and we have to You don't haul, it's going back, you got, geez, I don't like this, I'm not really doing this, that's not, it's losing its ground. Second person. You don't go around there, because you complain. You know what I mean, it's kind of like There was almost an accident there. For several reasons. During the afternoon, the sun shines down. We're going down the hill, and the sun's coming from the west, and comes down that hill. Comes down, past my house, and the dice ride down that hill, it's a long line. Almost half, just like in the morning, it's like And when is this going to be fixed? Okay, everybody knows. The question was asked after the first road pass away. If you would take care of things, if you got everything all straightened out, mine, whatever. Right, that's what you were asking? And it's been what, six weeks? So the question was, when is this going to be fixed? And I don't know. If you had asked to fix that property, you would have had it fixed, one way or the other. If you would have asked to fix it, you would have enjoyed it better. Just like you took the cones down, it was very pushing the car, it took the turn to We got And at the end of the summer, he's in the media Coming up the hill, you're going down the hill, and you can't see nothing. And that nice turning out around that hole, it's six, four feet out of the road. When it ended up, it was a terrible road. You know that. And so the question was, when is it going to be fixed? And after, after six weeks, it's a big question. I don't know, we don't see it as a big question after six weeks. Heck, because I don't, I just a call, I'm down, I'm just We don't have a succession now. And you know, it was the best intention, and you go fix that, you But What happens to the sand? It's up to these people. The road was not good. It would have lost off to it, I guess that's what I'm saying. It was a different You know what I mean, if you would say, if you, if you would have asked, and you would say, geez, what is it doing, this blah, 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 but you're down there And do whatever, you know what, what you would say? Well, it's fine. Yeah, it is. So you get the vision?
Want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we come out of executive session at seven twenty, uh, seven forty-five?
I'll second that. All in favor? All opposed? Alrighty, so we've come out of executive session. 405-6A1, and we've made a, made a decision?
Yes. Okay. We've been going back and forth and trying to find a road commissioner for District Two after the untimely passing of Joe Leturno. And just so everyone knows, Dave has not been part of this process just because of his closeness with one applicant and the way that the process is. So he reclusive himself from doing any of this, he's not been involved in any of the interviews or anything to do with this, so. Guess it rests on Kim and I, so. We, and we, so we reached out, we interviewed three individuals, we pared it down to two. We then reached out to a neighboring town, prior road commissioner, not affiliated with Acton, to see if they wanted to be in on the process, just to give us a little hand with the final. They declined, but they gave us some good pointers and things to look for.
And they didn't get either name?
No, yeah, they had no idea who we were.
No.
Yeah, no names, it was just, just information and whatnot, yeah. So, you know, we boiled it down to two applicants, two good applicants, we felt. It was not an easy decision. For myself, and I'm speaking strictly for myself, it boiled down to equipment. So, with that, I guess I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Adam Dolliber as the Road Commissioner for District Two. Actually, I might as well read this. Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Adam Dolliber. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Road Commissioner, District Two, within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2021, given under our hand the seventh day of October 2020. So this is only a five-month, six-month thing, it only goes to next June, so. It's just fulfilling the term of Joe's.
I'll second that. It's been moved, it's been seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
Yep.
Thank you, you know, everybody that came out.
Yes.
You know, we appreciate it, this is kind of a last minute before winter again. And it wasn't an easy decision, at all.
No, not at all, so. He has extensive background in, the stat was, road plowing and whatnot, for the state of Massachusetts, doing ninety-five, I don't think he does four ninety-five, but ninety-five and one twenty-eight and things like that, he does his own equipment, dump trucks and whatnot, and has a plan, because we did, the last interview we did, we asked both applicants to bring us in a plan. And both plans were very good, so, but this is where we're headed, so. Okay?
Alright, announcements. A, Sandbit. And B?
Do on the fourteenth.
Do on the fourteenth, and then the tanker seven, same thing, it says ten fourteen. Alright, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Alright, I'll second that motion. The move, seconded, all in favor?